Close your eyes before we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nicole, please. Mrs. Antalek Everett.
Here.
Mrs. Gaston.
Here.
Mrs. Galbo.
Here.
Mr. Garnott.
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Here.
Ms. Patchen.
Here.
Mr. Wade.
Here.
Mr. Zoff.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Walker, would you review the fire exits?
The fire exits are directly in front of us and behind the audience.
Would you like to introduce our works next?
I would. This evening, we have a great presentation from Mr. Frank Mulhern and Mrs. Nicole Triaske. And they have brought some of their colleagues as well, but I'll let them introduce you to them when they get to that part of the presentation. So I'll turn it over to them.
Okay, good evening, everyone. At the start of the board meeting tonight, we're doing a presentation on the district plan for special education, which is a required presentation and document under Commissioner Regg's Part 200 for special education. I'll be presenting it along with the Assistant Director, Mrs. Triasi. When we are done, we will bring our social workers up because March is Social Work Month, and they're going to speak briefly about their roles since they're contained in a part of this report. The board should have received the full report. In most cases, a district plan is not quite that lengthy, but we wanted to give you a history of what we've been developing. It covers four or five years. It's actually about seven years of work because you can't look at special ed programming within one year, and I believe not even within two. So hopefully, if guys have had a chance to digest that, and if there are questions, we can answer them tonight or at another time that Dr. Walkley can arrange if people want to discuss it further. Tonight, we're going to present a brief synopsis of what's contained in the district plan. And so I'm going to have it get started with Mrs. Triasi.
All right, so special education. I think those of us that work in it or close to it, we know it. But those of us who work very closely with special education also know that we speak in a lot of acronyms and alphabet soup, as I like to call it. So we're just going to break it down a little bit in terms of who are we? Who is -- what is special education? Who are we? First of all, if you see in the center there, we're the students. We currently service, this year, 575 students with IEPs or individualized education plans. 69 of those students are currently receiving their services in out-of-district programs, and 506 are in district. We also included the numbers of students with 504 plans. 504 accommodation plans typically don't fall under special education. However, due to the rising number, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, and because new procedures and legal requirements have allowed us to provide some services, related services, we did include them on here as well because, as you'll see, the people around the oval there are servicing them as well. And then, just for your knowledge also, there's preschool students with disabilities or IEPs, and currently, the district has 86 preschool students with disabilities. The school staff does not service those students. The community programs actually service those students. However, the school staff are responsible for developing and overseeing their plans and being a part of the committee to do that. So if you look around the oval, we've got administrators, special education teachers, teaching assistants, aides, psychologists, social workers who are here today, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, guidance counselors, clerical staff, all together work to make up the Special Education Department. So who do we serve? We serve those students with special needs in the academic or social-emotional developmental areas that require some individualized supports in order to be successful in school. Again, 504 plans, they're on there. That's the 98 students that we talked about before. Then if you look at the other categories, that from visual impairment down to autism, those numbers represent, if you combine it, represent the other 575 students with IEPs that we were, that I mentioned previously. So as you can see, primarily, the students with learning disabilities. That's the largest category of students we serve, followed by other health impairment and speech-language impairments. But we do have students represented in each of the categories listed there. What do we do? We help students who otherwise may fall through the cracks, for lack of a better word. They really need something a little bit different. They need individualized education plans. They need individualized supports. They need individualized pathways. And it's the job of the Special Education Department to build those pathways or those bridges or opportunities for success by providing, you know, different levels of service. So yes, how do we do that? We do that a number of ways. One way is if you just look at, in district, we have a continuum of services, which is pretty typical of most districts. So we have students who, all they need is related services. And when I talk about related services, I mean, you know, maybe they need some counseling, maybe they need speech-language therapy, maybe they need occupational therapy, but otherwise are functioning within the general education classroom okay. We have some students who require consultant teacher services. They just need a special education teacher to provide them with some supports or, and/or provide their teachers with some resources on how to best service them. We have students in resource room classes, which is typically a pull-out daily supplemental skills program. We have integrated classes, which are co-taught classes with general education teacher and a special education teacher together. And then we have our basic self-contained classes, which are designed for students with special education needs with a special education teacher there as the primary educator. In addition, and that's pretty typical of most districts, not all districts have that full continuum, but most do. In addition, in Beacon, we are proud that we have some specialized self-contained classes as well. So STEP stands for Student Transition Educational Program. That is a program for students entering ninth grade, and it tends to provide the supports needed for students who maybe were coming from roundabout into the high school, but were showing some needs that if STEP wasn't available, they may be referred to an out-of-district program. Or we have students that are in out-of-district programs who were transitioning back into the high school, and that's a good environment for them to be able to make that transition successfully. And typically, it's servicing students with some social, emotional, behavioral, or academic needs in addition to some learning needs. We have our ADL, which stands for Assisted Daily Living/Spectrum Classes. For those of you who have been on the board for a while, you know that we've, we started with what we called bubble classes, where we brought some students back from out-of-district classes that were on the autism spectrum, and we developed our own autism programs. And they've been very successful, and they've moved up. And we've had a new class come in, and they're being, they're very successful as well. And then we realized, as they were getting older, that their educational needs were more similar to those of students with assisted daily living skill programs. So that's where we've shaped their, how we've shaped their program. And then we also have specialized reading instruction classes, which are led by Wilson Level 1 trained teachers. And that is like a resource room model. Then, some of our students do require more supports than we are able to offer in district, and therefore, they, through the recommendation of the Committee on Special Education, they are referred to an out-of-district program. So we have some students attending BOSI's program, which include Dutchess County BOSIs as well as Orange Ulster BOSIs and Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSIs. And then we have some students that are in private placements, such as Green Chimneys or ASTER. And then we have some, a few students who are residentially placed because their needs require a full level of care. And then we also help the students we serve by providing, or special education helps provide different pathways in which they can successfully graduate from school. And that, we have students with special education needs who achieve a Regents diploma, some with a local diploma, some that are working towards career development in Occupational Studies, and some who are working on the skills and achievement commencement credential. And that's more for students who are alternately assessed with more intellectually-based disabilities. Where do we provide these services? Primarily, within our own district, as I mentioned before. Out of that 575, out of those 575 students, 35% of them are currently in our district elementary schools. 25% are in roundabout middle school. 28% in the Beacon High School. And then 7% are at the, one of the three BOSI's placements that I mentioned. 4% are in one of the other out-of-district private placements, and then 1% is residentially placed. I'm going to let Frank talk about the accomplishments.
Okay, well, as I said before, the report that we wrote and gave to the board is really a history. It's got a lot of material in it. And every time I talk about special ed, I actually think about kids because we're in annual review time. So every one of these accomplishments, I can put faces to. And so they truly are accomplishments. So one thing that was a major goal of this district was to serve more kids, give kids more of an opportunity to go to school with their cohort in their home school. And we've done that. We had over 120 students out of district when, in 2008, 2009. That's 69 now. The rest of them are here. And some of those classes that were referred to, that you, the board, approved, have really blossomed and helped a lot of kids to stay in the district. So Nicole mentioned the STEP class having measurable success. I won't say any more than Nick DiMarco, the school psychologist at the high school, did a four-year study on the STEP program that he's presented around the high school and outlining remarkable results, and also guidance as to who best fits that program as they move forward. And then the Spectrum ADL classes. The story is that, in my first year here, I went to see a student who was going to a BOSI's program, one of our kids, and I observed him. And then the teacher said, would you like to see the rest of your kids? And I realized, of the two classes that had 12 kids in them, five were from Beacon. And it was at Spack and Kill Schools. And I thought, well, if they could do it in Spack and Kill, I could do it in Beacon. And that's how these ADL classes, the bubble class that Nicole referred to, started. Expanded school-to-work program. Another quick story. Our school-to-work service providers, and they're under contract under the IDEA grant, are all retired special ed and general ed teachers from Beacon, who in their retirement come in every day, and they provide access in pre-vocational training and access to real job work, not only in the building, but also at shops and businesses in the local area from Newburgh to Beacon. It's provided an awful lot of opportunity, not only for our kids, but coincidentally, it helps us to fulfill our responsibilities under the Career Development and Occupational Studies New York State requirements for exposure to work experience for students. Development and implementation of a life skills curriculum. Our staff worked, I don't know if it was last summer or the summer before, on developing a curriculum for life skills on the secondary level. We hope to keep that going, and we've gotten creative with it so that in, for example, our ninth-grade STEP class, the life skills curriculum is actually part of the push-in on their, on their counseling in the class. And so the teacher, the social worker, and the psychologist work that class together once a week. Development of targeted reading instruction. In some ways, I'm really proud of this. In some ways, I'm still a little embarrassed by it. We have developed, seven teachers helped them get their Level 1 Wilson certification. Four of them, two at the high school, two at the middle school, are actually reading instruction teachers. So we are doing a great job seeing amazing growth by kids who came into middle school two and three grades behind in reading. The embarrassment part is that I'm still trying to get into the rest of the school. And I think, under Dr. Walkley's leadership and conversations we've had already, the elementary school, which started some work a couple of years ago when Dr. Walkley was here as interim assistant soup, is now starting to kick into place so that maybe in the future, we won't have many kids coming into middle school with less than proficient reading abilities. So we operate those classes, and they do well. And the progress we're seeing in a lot of students is remarkable. Increased access to assistive technology for all sped students. Next week, I'll just say, on March 19th, right in this building, I know there's something else big going on here with the Air Force Band. We're going to try and be in a room down the hall. But we're teaching parents how to use Read and Write Google because we have 350 licenses for students with special needs to have web-based access to Read and Write Google, for Google, and the parents are going to be trained on that on March 19th. That's the same night, the Thursday of every month that, for six years, we've been holding parent meetings. Increased integrated planning, ICT-integrated co-taught teaching, planning opportunities for gen ed and special ed teachers at roundabout and Beacon. We realize we have to reorganize ourselves, and we've been doing it to make sure that the opportunities for planning time to be made available to those teachers, that's helped a lot. We also have opportunities for more targeted instruction and self-contained classes. Our self-contained teachers, up until two years ago on the, on the, on the secondary level, meaning middle school, taught all four subjects. It seems insane when you look at it through the lens of Common Core and the expectations of New York State performance and learning standards now. So our teachers now only teach two subjects. They either teach English and Social Studies, or they teach Science and Math. And it has helped for teachers to become more adept at the instructional end of it, and for our kids to get different viewpoints from their teachers if they happen to be in special ed for different subjects. We'd love to take that even further. On the elementary level, again, six years ago, if you were in special ed self-contained, you were in either K-2 or 3-5. Now, when I think of my kids, and I have kids who have had and have IEPs, in some ways, that's not fair. They should be in their grade level. Again, with the Common Core and the standards going up, it seems insane. But we were ahead of the game. Most of our classes, and we're heading toward that, are single-grade self-contained classes. We're not there perfectly. There are some classes that are multi-grade, but no more than two grades. And next year, if things work out right, it will be one class with two grades. Okay, what are the current issues, though? Let's get to the heart of the matter. The heart of the matter is that, in spite of all the things we're accomplishing, we have rising classification in 504 rates, and I'll show you a couple of graphs in a minute. But we have the highest classification rate we've had in the seven years I've been here. It's at 18.7%. It's pretty high. And we'll look at that in a second. Part of that is due to the increased rigor of Common Core New York State assessments and pressure on parents, teachers, and students to have their kids classified. And I often get calls from parents saying, my child's not classified, but you know, she's never going to really do this, or he's never really going to do that, or my children are never, because the tests are too hard, and my kids don't focus, and, you know. And so you are getting earlier and earlier an increased identification of diagnosis of students and worry on the part of parents, worry on the part of teachers on how we're going to help these kids. And sometimes, when I close my eyes and try to relax, the metaphor I have is that we're all out on a big ocean, and there's a storm coming, and some of the kids are in the water, and they look around for a boat, and the boat says "special ed." And there, there we are. We've got to, in some of our solution, develop as many opportunities in general ed to help kids prior to their application for eligibility for special education. Physicians are another group. Doctors now send us letters, not only telling us a kid needs a 504 plan or a consideration for eligibility, but they're starting to give us the test and program mods they need, which is amazing because I don't tell them when to do an X-ray or take blood tests. But it is happening a lot more. And some of it is earlier diagnoses and greater understanding of things that afflict children we didn't have before. And some of these kids have gone through life without anybody paying attention to what's afflicting them. And so this process continues. And one of the other areas is that our district RTI plan, which is well-written, put together, and there are some people doing hard work on their IT, RTI committees. We're still in process of developing Tier 1 and Tier 2 interventions and materials. The other major issue is low New York State assessment scores. Well, before we get there, let me just say, and we said it at the beginning of the year, special education made all of its academic targets in all areas and all schools this year. Proud to say that. And we will continue. We haven't hit the standards that we want, but we're going to keep going. And you can see for yourself that we're now applying some ideas to the, to the integrated structures in our teaching and instruction and developing our literacy and math curriculum, as well as those RTI supports that I mentioned before. Let's look at a couple of grades. It'll only take a few minutes. But on the left side, you'll see, I wanted to lay out just what's apparent from 2011, 12 school year to the current year. That blue line represents out-of-district. So we've gone from 98 kids in that year down to 69. That's good stuff. And that's good stuff because you're helping kids. And in the 504s, it shows a different trend, where we started with 42 kids in 2011-12, and today, we have 98. I mean, there were 42 in the whole district in 2011-12. I have 42 in the high school alone. So anyway, that's just to give you a picture on how classification rates are impacted. And yet, at the same time, the students that we're bringing into district, on the right, you have a number of classified students and corresponding rates. So in 2011-12, we had 593 students and a 16.1% classification rate, still considered high in small-city school districts, about 2%, 2.5% higher than what the state says it should be. In 2012-13, we went up to 602 classified students, a 17.1% classification rate. Last year, we had 600 students and a 16.9% rate. And in this year, we have an 18.7 rate and a 575 students. Now, I'm going to ask you, as if I was teaching math again back in middle school, what's odd about that graph? And I won't wait for anybody to answer. I'll just tell you, that fourth column looks weird. How come that, that blue column is so small, but the rate has gone up? The reason is that our classification rates, we've actually have the lowest number of classified students this year than we've had in five years. But our reduced enrollment overall in the district has gone down at a greater rate. Nicole was teasing me last week, saying, well, that's because the general ed parents leave, and the special ed parents love us and don't want to leave. So they're staying with us. The reality is, if you look at that grid, in 2011-12, we had an enrollment in Beacon City Schools of 3,336 kids. Today, we've got 3,064. And it's a, it's a steady decline. And it does impact the rate because even though we're at the lowest number of special ed students, 575 we've had in four or five years, our rate is the highest that it's been. Okay, so I want to mention some of the plans and goals, which is part of the district plan, and then turn it over to the next speakers. After they're done, if there are questions, both of us, all of us, would be happy to answer them. Some of the goals are in-district programs in least restrictive environment. We have enough kids coming out of pre-K into the district with a certain profile of disabilities. We could form another MAPS class, another class for kids with disabilities, which would be another bubble class, similar to the one we have already, actually, the other two we have. Increased CDOs vocational opportunities. I would like to stretch the envelope and have this district look at it. We are doing great stuff with kids in job markets. One of our kids who graduated from this program was on the, in the newspaper recently in Beacon, and he's a volunteer fireman. And his picture was on the cover of a section of the paper, being involved. And that's all he ever talked about, was being a fireman. So he did it, and hopefully, he considers that we helped him. But we'd like to help kids get into the workforce, particularly those kids who may not be able to complete a local or Regents diploma. We want to continue our extended school year programs. Two or three years ago, we didn't have much of an extended school year program. Today, we operate three classrooms and reading instruction in the program, in the summer, for students in our district and some out-of-district for related services. That's big time. And it meets a need because, if you look at the local Dutchess BOSIs, they no longer offer full-day extended school year. They offer three hours. We offer a full day. And so parents started coming to us, and as we were bringing kids back, we decided, well, let's go for it. So we are approved, and every year, we go for that approval for offering extended school year programs for our students, which includes reading instruction. Curriculum writing. We're going to need a lot more of that this summer on intensive literacy and math classes. What are we doing there to support the instruction of those areas, English and math in particular, when it comes to, on the high school level, Regents and things of that sort, tests of that sort? Elementary reading instruction. We need to build targeted Wilson-based classes in the elementary school, as we have done with great success in the middle and high school. That's a district effort, but I see special ed as a significant part of that. Reshaping the elementary integrated model. Brief history. In 2008-9, in our integrated classes in elementary, we had a full-time special ed teacher, full-time general ed teacher, and a full-time TA in every integrated class. At that time, due to budget concerns, regulatory clarifications, we realized we didn't need to do that, and we cut it back so that we have what we have today. One, one full-time general ed teacher, three hours of a special ed teacher is supposed to be there during the, the English block, and a part-time TA, which is an accessory to it, not part of the IEP. And we don't think it's working. We've been saying that for a number of years. So we're looking to, for ways to reshape it so that we could restore some of that. We don't think going back to three full-time people in an integrated class is necessary, but some other version of that might work. And we've already introduced some models and discussion to both Karen Kellogg and Dr. Walkley. And the discussion will continue. Walkley, and the discussion will continue. Professional development. We're getting a lot of free training through the Regional Special Education Training Core, RSE Task at BOSIs, for explicit direct instruction, teaching and responsive classes, assessments, and the CSE process. Parent participation. SEPTA. I've been talking about SEPTA for years, but I never seem to be able to get it, because I need a groundswell and support in that. But after consulting with some local districts that have SEPTA, special education PTAs, it would be great if we could move in that direction. We've been good at small groups, like I work with the Spectrum Parents, but I think it would benefit this district, as I read some of the other school district websites that have SEPTA, who would benefit us a lot, I think, to have a SEPTA and be happy to help put in place the steps that are needed. And I remember Mr. Lambert gave me some context on that a couple of years ago, too. Special education manual, it was part of a review of the special ed department last year, to rewrite that. We've had no time to do that this year. I'll be honest with you. You know, weekends, everything, there's still no time, but it needs to be made a priority so we can reestablish our criteria, procedures for delivering service, and also making determination about students' eligibility for special education. And then, last but not least, student transitions. As the district is shrinking in enrollment, as we commit ourselves to making sure that special ed kids are not moved more than general ed kids, as we try to make seamless promotion for kids, we need to reduce our, spread out how we do our special ed and reorganize. And in my opinion, I'm just the director of pupil personnel, I think you need to look at systems that would redistrict so that you have K2 schools and 3, 4, 5 schools. That's my opinion. That's only one person's opinion. But if you go to the newspaper and look at what's going on in Wappinghurst right now in terms of discussion of that, as their, as their numbers decrease, too, it might be a good time to consider it as you look at the next couple of years. I'll leave you with this quote, and while I'm reading, reflecting on that, maybe the social workers will come down and tell you what's happening. Because this is social work month, and because these four people here, Philistine Oliver, raise your hands. Rachel Fiella, Elizabeth Botero, and Ken Currs, those are our four social workers in this district. They have done a lot. I'm going to talk about them March 23rd, when I do the fiscal budget for special, the presentation of the budget, because these folks have done a lot to help us on that end, too. But their major work is about helping our kids negotiate the day, especially kids who are homeless, kids who are in crisis, kids who are just trying to grow up. And they do a marvelous job. It's hard to get to see them all the time, because they're always busy, but I've given them a few minutes tonight to talk about what they do. There you go. Ms. Oliver.
As Elizabeth is getting everything set up, I'll get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. As Frank has mentioned to you, March is recognized as National Professional Social Work Month. I'm Philistine Oliver, currently assigned to Sergeant in South Avenue. My colleagues are Elizabeth Botero, currently assigned to Glenham, and JV Forrestal; Ken Currs, assigned to Rumbaugh Middle School; and Rachel Fiella, currently assigned to Beacon High School. I'm going to end this introduction with a quote that was taken from the School Social Work Association of America. "School social workers are instrumental in furthering the purpose of the schools, to provide a setting for teaching, learning, and for the attainment of competence and confidence. School social workers are hired by school districts to enhance the district's ability to meet its academic mission, especially where home, school, and community collaboration are key to achieving that mission." And so now Rachel will come to present you with some of our history.
Good evening. I just wanted to just mention a few key points that were important in social work history. In 1898, our first school of social work was called the New York School of Philanthropy, which is now called Columbia University School of Social Work. And in 1963, President Lyndon Johnson created a new series of Great Society programs that were led by the nation's social workers. And in 1970s, social workers helped make both the Supplemental Security Income Program and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And lastly, I wanted to bring up in 1984 that President Reagan declared the month of March as National Professional Social Work Month.
I'm going to be talking to you tonight about the roles of the social workers in the schools, which is really vast and varying. I'm going to do my best to summarize it. Social workers do a great deal of counseling in the school districts, from elementary all the way up to high school, some of, a lot of which is Medicaid reimbursable for a lot of the special education students. Counseling involves individual counseling, one-on-one, as well as group counseling, especially with teens, you do a lot of group counseling, but it can be done at the elementary level as well. And a fair amount of parenting counseling occurs in the schools, too, to help the parents support working with their children. Counseling involves not only special ed students, but regular ed students as well. When we work with the regular ed students, issues might entail grief, divorce, adjustment. Special ed students, as you know already from hearing tonight, has to do with IEPs, also known as Individualized Education Plans, and a great deal of work goes into that as well, in regards to social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs. Another important piece of the IEPs is also social development, especially at this time of the year when we're doing annuals, annual CSE meetings. And a lot of thought goes into the year as to what progress the student has made and the future progress that they need to, future goals they need to work on. District collaborative efforts concerning students with teachers, administrators, and whatnot involves, is all around CSE meetings throughout the year, not just in the annuals now. We have reviews that happen throughout the year, excuse me, to really look at what's been accomplished, if there are any concerns of a parent, or a teacher, or any of the support staff. Then we come together and we review what needs to be adjusted or changed, modified on the IEP. So it's a work in progress all year long, working on IEPs and working in CSE meetings. The RTI committee meetings are a real integral part of what we do in the school district, too. When I facilitate, well, we facilitate meetings all year round, again, is what I wanted to say, week to week. We get referrals from teachers, parents, administrators, and the referrals have to, are all about the regular ed student, and what we can do for the regular ed student. And we think of, you know, that student just as much as the special ed student in the building, in the buildings. And we kind of, what we do is, we explore ways to kind of help that student so it just, things don't escalate, it's really a problem-solving committee. And every building is different, and in my building, I facilitate the RTI meetings. And, you know, we explore everything that we could possibly do in that meeting to help the student. And then we end, and then we also follow up on those, to these, too, as well. A big tool that we use, aside from the RTI, is FBA meetings. FBA, another, more acronyms, FBAs and BIPs, the Functional Behavioral Assessment and the Behavioral Intervention Plan, is a, is a, is a big instrument in really, you know, helping the student to get through their struggles in the school, behaviorally, emotionally, educationally. It involves a lot of people, some people are familiar with it, but not all. It involves identifying the behavioral difficulties that the student has, the triggers to what causes those behaviors, the consequences of the behavior, and in that, what is the outcome of the behavioral difficulty? What does it result in? A lot of times, that is declining grades, or losing friends, or self-esteem declining. And that's the kind of consequences I, what we mean when we talk about an FBA. So all that's explored, and then we, what we do is develop a BIP, a Behavioral Intervention Plan, with the parent. The parents are, we have a lot, we have heavy participation from the parents, actually, too, I wanted to mention, in all our meetings. And I think that's only increased in the past years. As a matter of fact, it definitely has increased. That's a fact, which is great to see. The more, with each year that passes, I see, I'm seeing more and more involvement from parents, which is a great thing, in these meetings and working with us collaboratively. Another part that we don't often talk about as social workers, but it's a very big part, too, is, many parts to the whole pie, is that, you know, we refer kids to where needed, outside for counseling in addition to what we do. And then we work with those, we follow through during the years, whether it's a doctor, or another social worker, or a psychologist, those kind of people and their professions outside of school, to help the students be successful in school as well as out. And we make quite a few referrals in that way. And a big part of that is, too, is that, you know, although we do a lot of counseling in the school, family counseling is a big part of that, is a big part of, a lot of times, what a family needs, that, you know, you can provide, to an extent, in the school, but then you might need a more in-depth, involved, and long-term type of counseling that might not be able to be provided in the school. So we try to work with the providers outside, as well as do what we do day-to-day. And we work with all the community agencies. We make referrals to community agencies based on the needs of the, of the students and the families. And last but not least, family support efforts. During the holidays, and a lot of people know, know about this, because it promotes itself, but there's a lot of, you know, families in need, particularly around the holidays, of course. They need food, they need toys for their children, clothing. We, you know, we try to provide even gift cards sometimes for families, and the community is a big integral part of that, making that happen. And our, and our PTSO, of course, we couldn't not mention them, we'd be remiss in that, because PTSO is really a great force in Beacon, in helping the families and the kids, especially Thanksgiving, and, you know, to kick it off, for instance, when you're trying to get turkey and a whole meal for a family that might not be able to have a turkey dinner. Or, and obviously, Christmas, too, is another big one, where, you know, people are really in need. So, and with that said, Students Against Destructive Decisions, they're a big part of that, too, and we really rely on them. They help us a great deal with making all this possible. So as you can see, there's a lot of, we cover a lot of ground as social workers in the, in the school districts, and you never know, you know, it's, you do a lot from day-to-day and, and through the year. And on that note, I'd like to pass this on to Elizabeth Botero, so she can speak to you about McKinney-Vento.
Hi, everyone. I would like to mention briefly about the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. It is a federal law that ensures immediate enrollment and educational stability for homeless children, youth, and unaccompanied youth. The term homeless children and youth is defined as individuals who lack fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence. Children who are in this situation, who are covered under this law, are children who are living in temporary shelters, in emergency or transitional situations. They are living with friends or relatives due to the loss of housing or economic hardship, also called double up. They are living in a motel, in a hotel, campgrounds, cars, train stations, bus stations, or any other public space. They are living in an abandoned building or some other inadequate accommodations. They are, some of them are waiting for in foster care placement. The students in temporary housing have the right to immediate enrollment in schools and classes. They are entitled to free transportation to school of origin or local school. They are entitled to get special education services, even if they don't have an IEP available. They are entitled to participate in any school activities available to other students. They get free school meals without completing an application. Our district-appointed liaison is Mr. Frank Mulher, and the social workers are the building-level liaisons. Thank you. I'm going to pass it back to Philistine.
We have a very brief video clip. If you look at the very back of the room, these are students that we work with. Their parents came out to support us, and I just want to thank them. A special thank you also goes to Mike Gersh and, as well as Yvette Tirado, for helping us in this effort.
I never talk about my past and what I've been through. I never opened up to someone on the mental. Expressing emotion is something I don't get into. To disguise my pain and smile, it was essential. You listened so attentively. You showed empathy, concern, sympathy, cared mentally, protecting me from the enemies inside my head. It took time, but I grew comfortable. At last, I trusted you in my past, because I trusted you would be there, always. We clicked and grew close. You helped me put my thoughts at ease. You watched me grow and never allowed me to make the same mistake twice. And to you, I will always be thankful.
Thank you.
So we've taken up a lot of time in telling you what we do, and I want to thank the social workers and all the students and their parents who are here who gave express permission for your child to be in the video. Anyway, I left just a little bit of room for questions, so.
Someone have any questions, Frank? Well, thank you for a great look at special ed in Beacon City Schools.
Thank you.
Tonight, we rarely get a chance to celebrate, so we have some accolades tonight from the high schools. So I'd like to call down Mr. Nemeczek and Dr. Severdin, and they have some information to share this evening. Oh, are they, I'm sorry.
Is anyone using the?
Okay, all right.
Good evening. Everything okay? Thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Walkley, to come up and just say a couple of thank yous to a couple of special people here at Beacon. This is, I started my second full week. Last week was a little bit of a whirlwind, kept going around, but finally starting to settle in, and I feel very comfortable being here. And I have to say that there's two individuals that really have helped that transition for me in the last, in the last seven days. Cindy Plomerico, phys ed teacher here, sat in and took care of a lot of the signing and okaying of things, and moved everybody along quite well, and took care of that aspect. And she did a great job in organizing, left about 100 of those, more than 100, of great scholar-athlete things for me to sign, because she thought that I could do this. I just finished them today. That was an honor to do. And Lisa Tompkins, the athletic secretary. If you don't know what goes on behind the scenes, just sit in the office just for about five minutes, and you'll figure out what happens. Scheduling, making sure that this big transition here came at the end of one season. The winter season was ending, which means sectional play, postseason play, coaches going here, student athletes making sure they have the proper sectional papers signed, all that kind of things behind the scenes, and she took care of that. I walked in today, we started the spring sports. So within a week, we finished one, and we started another. And I'll be honest with you, it was as smooth as silk. I hadn't, no phone calls, no issues. So that's accolades to those two people who made the transition for me to come in here at Beacon, very enjoyable, and I look forward to working with everybody again in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marty. I want to reiterate what you just said. Cindy and Lisa just continued the program, running as smooth as it had in the past. Except my right arm, took a beating with Cindy, everything she signed, I had to counter-sign. So every time I turned around, there she was, you know, need to sign this. And I know what it's like for all those certificates, you know, but it's one small way for us, by signing those things, to acknowledge what our student athletes have done. And on that note, this past Saturday, Paige Basely, Rayvon Gray, and Terrell Davis, they, they traveled to Ithaca, and there was the championship at Cornell University. And unbelievable, they, Rayvon and Terrell, they placed first and second in the long jump among all New York State public high schools. One and two, Beacon, to stand up on that podium, must have been a phenomenal sight. Now, also, competing there would be the Federation Schools. Now, also, competing there would be the Federation schools. So they're first and second, placed them second and fourth. The Federation schools are all your private and parochial schools, but for the public school division, they came in first and second. And also, Paige done a tremendous job, you know, in her events as well. So I want to mention that. Again, they did us proud. All right, thank you.
May I have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the important history of the particular individual, or will return as soon as possible.